Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 4th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room and now join us as we re-pledge our allegiance to the American flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first agenda item is a continued public hearing for Speedway. The applicants are seeking a site plan amendment to change some colors and make a few minor additions to the previously approved site plan, as well as put up new signage. In the interim, the applicants received a determination granting all variances as requested from the zoning board of appeals, so we are now free to act. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Laughton-Bacher. How are you?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Andy Laughton-Bacher. I seem to be without a lawyer at the moment.
I don't think you'll need him.
You don't think so?
Nope.
Well, then I'll take a seat.
If it makes you feel any better, I sent him the resolution ahead of time, and he didn't send back any comments.
Well, that's a happy fact.
So, any comments from the consultants? Any comments from the board? As I said, this is a pretty simple matter. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this filed?
I do. Resolution granting amended site plan approval for Speedway, May 4th, 2016, Resolution 16-8A. Whereas, 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 we're as, we're as, and we're as. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the amended site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized as a need to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, paymentable fees and escrow. Two, revision of the amended site plan to include a planning board signature block. Be it therefore result that the planning board hereby recommends that the zoning administrator issue signed permits for the proposed signs as depicted on the sign elevation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Laughton-Bacher, despite your attorney not being here, do you need a copy of the signature block, our standard one?
No, I'm sure Ken has it. He can.
Okay. If not, Ms. Knapp can email it to you. Just let us know.
Okay.
And I think your conditions are pretty light, so I think as soon as you get us that sheet.
I'm happy with them.
And congratulations on getting through the ZBA in record time as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's good to see you. Have a safe drive back.
Unfortunately, it's only short.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing. Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, which is located in Hyde Park Mall at 3999 Albany Post Road, is seeking permission or approval to reface the building, add a drive-through for the convenience of its customers, make a few other minor changes. And I think just for the record, I should ask and make certain that this was advertised properly, Ms. Knapp? The public hearing?
This was, this, yes.
For members of the audience, we had a sort of a clerical snafu and did not get the public hearing notices out in time, so they are now. So, gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you, since this is the first time the public will have a chance to see what you're proposing. Oh, I should add, Mr. Groninger is recused, and Planning Board alternate, Robert Waters, has been appointed to be in his place for this application.
Take my mic with me.
First use here, or the mic, so you're going to be using it.
Are we all set?
Sorry. It's a new microphone system, and none of us are familiar with it. Supposedly it's better sound. I can't hear the difference, so. But people are nodding in the audience. Okay, great.
We'll give it a try. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Roger Keating. I'm from the Chazen Companies. With me tonight are representatives from the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Turner Construction, who's the credit union's construction manager, Jay from Mori Architects. We're here to do a brief overview of the proposed improvements that the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union is looking to do at their existing branch in the Hyde Park Mall. In general, the credit union is looking to add drive-through service to this existing branch. Currently, there are no drive-through services available there. They have an existing drive-up ATM, and they're looking to do an attached canopy that would provide two drive-up teller lanes that would be on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of the building. Associated site improvements to go along with that would be the removal of three parking spaces on the west side of the building to accommodate that drive-through lane and canopy, and the addition of some pavement along the backside of the building for the additional lanes that we would need to have to get the vehicles around the building. Besides that, there are really no other significant site improvements. Jay from Mori Architects is here. He can do a brief overview with respect to what the building changes are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Jay Dezing, Mori Architects. As Roger had pointed out, we are proposing a drive-through structure on the west side of the existing building. So that's this section of building over here. In addition to that, we're going to be updating the facade of the entire building to match the style of the existing Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. So we'll be using a stone veneer at the base of the buildings, matches the plaza, the exact same stone. It'll be, the rest of the building will be clad in cement board siding and stucco trim. Architectural roof shingles on the new roof of the drive-through structure, and a little roof canopy over the entrance to help accentuate that. There's the existing glass and steel canopy over top of the main entrance that is slated to remain at this point. And then I do have samples, material samples and color samples of all the finishes that are going to be on the building, and again, they're going to match everything that's on the existing plaza. Since our last meeting that we had with the planning board about a month ago, we addressed some concerns or some comments from some of the board and some of the board members and consultants. So a couple of changes that I just wanted to point out from our previous presentation. We've added a roof canopy over the back drive-through, or not the drive-through, that's the ATM, the existing ATM that's there. So there's a gable roof that was added there. On the Route 9 facing side, there's an existing mechanical entrance door that we've added a roof canopy over that. And then also on the front of the building, there was a request for a window matching the quatrefoil windows on the plaza, so we've added that there. So that's kind of an overview of what's changed since our last presentation, and I look forward to any other discussions or comments you might have.
Thank you. First, I want to say a well-done job as always, particularly showing the materials. Tad's going to like that, as you know.
Thank you.
And second, Mr. Keating, I appreciated the fact that of the eight points I made, the seven that you could respond to, you responded to. Thank you very much. And then you also responded to the Morse Associates memo as well. So let me first go to the consultants. Mr. Sittaro, any comments?
I took a look at the plans that were submitted, received by the planning board in April 28th. We just had a couple of small things. We'll send out something to Roger, but, you know, they're minor. The only thing that I saw was you did have a detail of the retaining wall now, and it showed a fence on the top of it. You really need a fence for just a two-foot.
It's a scenario where if there's somebody mowing or something up along the top there, it is a two-foot drop. We typically do have some, we usually do put some sort of fall protection next to that.
Well, we're probably going to want to see what that is, I mean, in terms of...
Could be, we could do a railing, but a fence probably is more appropriate there. Right, Scott?
Oh, I'm sorry. When you turn around, I'm getting buzzed by the audio people. When you turn around, they can't hear what you're saying.
Sure.
You can hold the new microphone.
Yeah. If it's new, I don't want to work with it, so. So, essentially, looking to make sure we have some sort of fall protection there, Pete, is really...
Yeah, I understand. So it's just something...
Be more ornamental type of fencing than...
Post and rail or something where it's like a see-through type thing. It's just more to protect, like you say, somebody like walking through there for whatever reason.
For whatever reason, if, you know, we're not encouraging people to walk through there.
No, but you know what happens.
Yeah. That's really it. And we're really not, it's, we're talking about, you know, that type of block wall where...
Yeah, no, I, no.
Very short.
That's fine.
I mean, just a split rail style fence might be nice.
Well, I mean, it's really like an aesthetic thing, so it's something that the planning board, you know, should weigh in on, and whatever is decided, just, you know, noted on the plan.
Okay.
And so I guess, you know, the planning board can discuss that. Michael, did you give Roger as part of comments, we had the agenda meeting last week about the landscaping on the...
I did not, because I waited to, I did today. I sent them, I didn't have Mr. Keating's email, but I sent them over to Mr. Dezing, who I think forwarded them on. But out of the comments we had at the agenda meeting, we didn't have the plans yet. They arrived the next day.
Right.
So I wanted to go through those, and actually, the only comments that there were, many made no longer relevant because they had the lighting plan, et cetera, in the new plan. So the only thing that I had on there was the addition of the Amalankier Arborea or the native service berry. It's a, it looks native, it's easy, and it'll soften up the area. So I mentioned that in my email this afternoon.
Okay. So, really, that was it. You are proposing, I know they're just replacement lights, but there's a couple of wall-mounted lights for the drive-through ATM in the back, and I think on the side, you propose it on the canopy. You know, with your final set of plans, be just put detail of what the fixture is going to look like. I mean, it's not going to be, it's going to be like a downlit fixture, not one that's got like a bright glow to it, it's all downlit.
They're all Dark Sky certified downlit LED fixtures.
That's fine. Just if you could just show like a detail of what it's going to look like on, you know, the lighting plan.
Okay.
But I'll write these down. I may just send an email, because these are pretty simple. I'm not going to get into writing.
I don't think you need to.
I'll copy the planning board, and, you know, I know you're going to talk about the fence, and I'm sure you're going to get around to talking about the elevations.
Well, one thing I was going to just bring up now with you was when I went to the building yesterday, when Mr. Waters and I went to the building, there are a lot of lights that face up.
Mm-hmm.
Are all those being replaced with new lighting? Because I know in the lighting, the photometric plan you provided, it does show that it goes zero, but I was worried, or thinking about light trespass. There are a lot of, there's a lot of uplights on the building. On the roof above the bump out where the ATM is, there's a light that shows facing straight up into the sky. I didn't stay to look at the lighting at night, but do you know what's...
I think all, basically, the building mounted lights are being replaced with new LED downlight.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make certain of that, because I know that our concern isn't always just what happens to it at the property line, but also light trespass, pollution, whatever, for people who... I live on the river, so I'm sensitive about what I see across the river, and I, we feel like we should be the same as a courtesy to the residents across the way.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make sure I...
What about the uplights? You said there was some uplights?
There's a bunch, but they're all being replaced, as I understand it now, with lighting that'll be down.
Yes.
Is that, is that right? They're all going to be replaced?
Yes.
So we can put a note?
Can we note, or I'll just, I'll just put that in my email, that all uplights...
We are showing a lighting plan, and we, I mean, they're shown on the building elevation.
That's my vision of this thing, so.
All right.
Thank you. Before I ask for Ms. Polidoro's comments, let me first get a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This way the public can speak. Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
I was just going to remind the board that county planning did respond. It was a matter of local concern, but they had comments on the elevations of the building, on the architectural features, so the board should take a look at that letter. And also, there were some emails going around today about a clothing bin and whose responsibility it is to have it removed. And the property owner suggested that the town go after the bin owner, but in fact, we would be going after Mr. Azarian, the property owner, and so perhaps you can just talk with him about having it removed.
Yeah. He stated that he's tried several times to have it removed, but obviously, we'll talk with him some more, and the same with the storage.
It is his property.
I understand.
He has the right to actually have both pieces towed away.
Oh, I...
By a metal scrap person.
Yeah.
I'm not making any suggestions, but to...
He should check with his counsel.
Yeah.
Yes. To state that the town should spend the money to do an enforcement action when it's against him as the site owner, not the transgressors, doesn't really make a lot of sense.
Yeah. No, I understand, Mr. Chairman. And his, I'm not saying this in his defense, but these clothing bin companies have dropped these on our other sites, too, so it's not that unusual. They do it without permission, but I understand where you're coming from.
Yes, we've just never allowed, as I said, this has the same stamp on the front as the one where the dog was found by the SPCA that nearly died of heat frustration as well as starvation, so. And even though it says clothing and shoe drop, the first thing I saw was a sofa next to it, some furniture and some pillows. I don't know what people think, even if they were going to try to make a charitable donation,
Right.
That they'd be bringing a sofa that came and fit it, oh, well, never mind. Thank you, Ms. Polidoro. Let me start to my left. Ms. Kane? Any comments?
I don't have comments at this moment.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'm the same way. At this moment, I don't have any.
Okay. I think we're going to hear comments from Mr. Waters, then.
Yes. I have a couple of concerns.
Let's make sure you have a microphone.
I have a couple of concerns. One of the concerns is that, you know, looking at the revised drawing, it just, it seems like it's a Band-Aid on a much larger problem. It's, the existing architecture is non-conforming to what the town's visions are according to the comprehensive plan. And the...
You said the existing architecture is non-conforming?
Yeah. No, no. The new proposed drawing, there's no bump outs, there's no depth, and things seem to be applied on the building, not, not integrated into the building to look like the plaza.
Right. Well, the building is just currently a rectangle. There's really no depth to the building.
I understand.
And we're not proposing any additions on the building.
Well, I was, that's what I was saying, that maybe that is something that should be looked at, is proposing that. The structure is an older structure, but you're asking for revisions. I'm afraid that in six years, it's going to look dated again. And then what do you do then? And it never seems to improve, so that's where I was going with that. The east elevation, I was, sent an email regarding that it wasn't the, what I was, had suggested in a workshop about possibly doing a double gable on that east wouldn't be symmetrical. And then I started looking at the plans, and I saw that the drive-through isn't symmetrical on that side. So, you know, I was like, okay, that's fine.
The question about the east facade, so there's a couple of different points.
Yeah.
Symmetry was one, that was more minor point.
Yeah.
But the other one, and we mentioned it in our response, is that we don't want to draw a lot of attention to that entrance door, and there's different opinions about that, but, you know, it's not a customer entrance. So to put a big roof over it and a column structure seems really to be, there's no function to it. So I understand that there's, you're suggesting it as an aesthetic improvement to the building. But in that same regard, when I approached that plaza, you know, driving by on Route 9, it's difficult to see that facade, even though it is the Route 9 facing side with all the pine trees that are screening that side. So when I come into the plaza, I'm looking at Stop &amp; Shop or that storefront, and then I turn, I look at the credit union, and I'm seeing the front of our building. So that east-facing side really isn't a prominent side, in my opinion, that requires adding a substantial entrance feature to it.
But it is the road, that is the road frontage side, I believe that would take, right? So...
It is the road frontage side, but again, it's heavily screened by trees and, you know...
Those trees don't have low-lying limbs. Those limbs are up now, and as they drop...
But they've also planted new pine trees there that you'll notice when you drive by, that are going to eventually start to fill in underneath.
Years.
So...
Yeah. But you could also see it from the field, when you're driving past Roosevelt Estate on the field.
It's very difficult to see it until you get right to Kessler. That's when you start to, that's, for that brief moment when you're passing Kessler, that's where the opening is.
Okay. I see it. And there's also people that walk that, that would see it, but, you know, so that was, that was, you know, a suggestion that I had, just to try to cover some of the vast, the wall space, there's a lot of glass. That was a comment that was made by a couple individuals, that there was, there seems to be a lot going on with materials. There's, there's the ephes, there's the, or stucco, the asphalt roof, then there's glass, there's metal canopy.
Mm-hmm.
There are stone.
I think the mixture of materials is a nice feature. It really, it helps to add character to the building, and, I mean, if it's getting too busy, then I'm not sure adding more gables is going to be the answer.
It's not that. It's the proportion of them. The one on the east side is only eight feet over a door, and that wall, I'm not exactly sure with the length of the wall. I'd have to take out a scale ruler. I didn't see a measurement on that wall, the length of that wall, but it's, it's almost insignificant. It seems like it was, it's just applied over a door. It'd almost be better if it wasn't there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not really a solution either, to making it an enhanced property.
Okay. All right. Well, how were some of the other comments you have?
So that's the east elevation. The south elevation, the front facade, the portion, the gable up on top seems just too, it's, it's, again, it looks like an applied feature, and it doesn't have any depth, it doesn't protrude from the structure, which would be a nice enhancement if you're trying to mirror what is happening at the plaza.
Yeah. So the plaza is different, because it's got the covered walkway that goes all the way across, and they were able to project all those structures out over the walkway. Unfortunately, we don't really have that kind of setup, so it's difficult to project that element out over the walkway. I mean, you had also talked about stepping it back when we were having a meeting.
Well, I'm talking about the, like, even the canopy. If the canopy was, if the canopy was removed, and the building facade came, protruded out two to three feet, and that was the architectural element, that would add an interest. Again, these are suggestions, I'm not designing it. I'm, I see it, I look at it, it looks very flat, one plane, non-dimensional. It's a square box with a couple peaks on it, and that was a concern. So that's with the south elevation.
You know, they tried to address that, you know, I think one thing that helps is that the front glass canopy does protrude a little bit, and then we added the ephes crown across the top two sides of the building, which that protrudes some, so it does try to break up that elevation a little bit.
No, like I said, it's commendable what you did with the structure. I'm just saying, in general, these are my takes on, if we're trying to improve the look of the town and stuff, we'll not get this building back in 10, 15 years from now. And then if it's just something that hasn't been totally explored, I think it's a disservice to the citizens, and that's the way I feel about it.
Okay.
I'm trying to get, you know, the plan is to get Route 9 to kind of conform, and I was hoping that the design would help inspire other people along Route 9 to do similar things.
I would hope, as it is designed, people would appreciate it and one of the...
Well, I think it's an improvement to what it is, but is it, is it really where it, the end and be-all of what can be done if everybody works together to try to make this? I think it could be very special, but...
Okay.
And that's, that's, the drive-through, that's a 50-foot span, I believe, or pretty close to it.
Thirty feet.
Well, it's 30 feet, and then you have another...
There's a step-down roof that's in between, so the front, or the large portion where the cars go through.
Right. It's this, this three plus whatever, I think it was 10-foot per bay, right? Is what it is?
Yes.
And then there's space for the machinery and stuff, so...
Yeah. So this section here is, I do have a scale. And that is almost exactly 30 feet this section.
Okay.
And then across here, this step-down portion is another 18.
Oh, microphone. Sorry.
Yep.
You can hear the beeps. You can hear the beeps.
So I understand the step-down, I understand the step-down, but, you know, if we're saying that we're going to try to, you know, use elements that are existing in the plaza, there's also the gas pumping station?
Mm-hmm.
That has a gable on it, a cross gable.
Yeah.
And that's what I was hoping would be mirrored in the new drawings, so...
Yeah. I mean, that, I looked at that, and, I mean, that, to have a little bit more substantial roof kind of makes sense, because it's a freestanding structure. You know, we didn't really want to have this become a focal point of the building. I mean, it's a side roof, it's, it is a stepped gable, so it does have a little dimension to it.
But it, but it would add an interest, and I think it would be an enhancement to the drawing.
Okay.
Again, that's, that was that. Then, like I said, I talked about the materials, the ephes or stucco, the glass is a bronze mirrored, and some of them are failing, it seems, but, and the, I think you have mullions in that?
Yes, we're applying.
They're applied on the exterior?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a point, because it is tinted glass, so they wouldn't really be noticeable inside.
You can see it with the mirroring and stuff on that.
Yes.
There's asphalt roof shingles, a steel, the painted existing metal panels, which I think the metal panels have somewhat of a, an element to, there seems like there's failure on the ones that are existing there.
Yeah.
Especially on the west side.
So that was what, what Mr. Dupree mentioned in his email today with the peeling, so...
Yeah.
I mean, that's going to be a function of, obviously, cleaning them, scraping them, and getting the paint applied properly.
Yep.
Do you think the paint can be applied properly, so it doesn't peel like that?
I would hope so. It's, you know, when we get out there and we start taking it out, if that panel is rotted, it may be replacing some of those. So I don't, you know, it's funny that it's on that side that you get, you're getting peeling and rotted, and if it is rotted, because that's, you know, typically, that's a side that gets...
Not each boat, yeah.
Yeah. So it gets some sun, it's not like the north side, which might stay moist and not dry out.
I know. It was sort of strange.
Yeah.
And it doesn't get any more intense sun than what the south elevation side, I don't believe either.
Right.
Because you'd have a longer sun span.
Yeah.
Facing down there on the front, and the front all seemed to be fine. Mr. Waters, before you go, I just want to point out, in our code, it's 108-4.5GD, oof, I'm sorry, E. "Large building design with the building as a facade longer than 100 feet shall present the appearance of a grouping of two or more small, well-proportioned buildings incorporating Ls, wings, verandas, porticoes, courtyards, and other similar elements as unifying features." I appreciate that when Mr. Waters said that there's, it's still a flat front, you're adding on, I believe, enough that you probably have 100-foot of feet of the building now. So I think that he's legitimate in saying that it would be nice to see more depth somehow on the main structure itself.
Is that the right way to interpret that?
Yes. Okay. Because even though you're not proposing, in addition to the building, the overall structure increases, as Tad defines it with the four columns on the roof above it, so...
Mm-hmm.
Because I know I spoke to Ms. Moss to make sure that I wasn't in error with how she defines structure. And so long as it has columns that support a roof, it's all considered to be part of one structure. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So there was, I mentioned today in some of the emails about you had a sketch that you were going to suggest for the front, that you...
I thought he might, but I'm not positive he has it.
I do have something, but I, again, you know, I didn't know, I wanted to get through the statements, I would be willing to share that with you.
Yeah. I mean, if you want to keep going, it's just, we were on the front, and I thought it might be a good time to talk about it, but...
I can show you, I can share this one. Yeah. Just, if you want to give one to Mr. Keating, too. I maybe want to do... Yeah, the attorney, or someone.
Really need, really need...
We can share.
We can share.
The board members can look at that.
Let me go this way, right?
Tony, I'm going to go. See. Thank you.
Well, that, the standing metal seam in the note could be asphalt, it doesn't need to be that. I, again, just trying to see how we can possibly cover those dated panels, bring that across, bring the facade out. It's a rough sketch of...
It's very nice.
That I...
I would agree.
No, that's a tissue of how I do things.
Yeah.
But it's, that's, I just thought...
Can you walk the board through what you're proposing? It looks as though the, the front entry is... It looks as though the, the front entry is three-dimensionalized, is that a term? Is pushed out?
It's pushed out. Uh, you know, it could be 20, it could be 24 inches, it could be 30 inches, it could be 36 inches, and then it's capped with the same gable, but it's dropped.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that, you know, your, you know, your ephes or your fascia board lines up with the upper windows and it just brings it down. And then I changed the pitch of the roof, because I think that plaza, looking at the, the existing roofs that are there on the gables are, it looks like they're 12 by 12s, I, I couldn't
There's actually two pitches on the, on the plaza, there's two different roof pitches.
Two different, but on the, the ma, the gables, like, as the entries into the storefronts?
Yeah, those are the steeper pitch.
Yeah, what are they, like 12, 12/12 or?
Um, probably not that steep.
10/12?
They're a little bit steeper than the, the, the smaller roofs that are in the middle of the plaza.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I had 10, 10/12 or, or 12/12
Okay.
pitch, so, uh, so that's what I did here. Just, you know, bringing out, putting the sign on, up where you had located it, but in the drawing, it's 20 feet high, the signage.
Mm-hmm.
And that seemed a little high to me, you know
It's about where you have it, are you saying it should be lowered?
I said, I put it, I put it there because I didn't know if the clients wanted real high visibility. I would bring it down
Okay.
to, on the stone, but, again, I'm not, this is, these are just my, how I looked at it, to, to create depth in, in going through it. And, um, you know, let's see, and then I brought, what I did was I brought the, those columns that you're saying are brought out to the same plane as the facade front now.
Right.
And then that would be a 12/12 also with that roof pitch, which would cover those panels. And I think that could create that feeling of, of a, of a walk-through.
Mm-hmm.
But it could be done with, there could be plantings in it and stuff.
Sure.
And it looks like it posts down, it gives a little weight, and it gives some more depth to the structure. And from a side view, I think it would be more pleasing to the eye, especially from Route 9. And I think, I think that's pretty much it with the, it has the quadrifile window that, that was asked for. That's pretty much, and that becomes the canopy, basically.
Mm-hmm.
It's the entry. So, I think it creates an actual
It's very impressive. I mean, you did a great sketch, but absolutely.
You want to hire?
Just going to say, this is not something that you'll be seeing from the rest of the board, I can assure you. It does look, it does look very pretty, and it seems to marry the, or knit together with the rest of the plaza and better, I don't want to say that you, the job that you presented first doesn't, but mainly it's because you pushed this forward.
Yes.
Which is what ma, makes it look, well, and it, it's also you've gotten rid of the glass canopy, uh, which doesn't, is not matched anywhere else in the plaza. So I have a couple of que, this, these are the metal panels?
That's a roof, yeah, that comes, it covers the metal pa, it covers the metal panels, so it's, it's, this is out on the same plane as this, so it's three feet out.
So there's a walkway now?
Well, it's not a walkway, it's like a
Pump bell.
Yeah, it's like a cover, it's almost like the Malloy Plaza, how that
It's a project, it projects out.
Yeah, projects out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it gives you a natural, you know, feeling.
It's an illusion.
It's an illusion, yeah.
Okay.
Gives you depth of
I'm sorry, I'm not using architectural terms, but I'm not trained as an architect, I can guarantee you, so, thank you.
Yep.
So what would you do then on the sides? Once you get the front, what do you do, what do you do on the sides?
We're out of money now, Pete.
Well
It's over.
Mr. DC is perfectly capable of coming up with, you know, I, these, this is, I just started with the front because I think that's the focal point of the
It is.
Of the, of the, the project. And then how do you, how do you mir, mirror that, how would you mirror that around? Well, that, those, those columns could wrap around, I mean, but, but it is a, it is a budgetary thing and I don't, like I said, this is just one way I saw that you could get depth into that building and create an interest so that you didn't just have a flat, the flat plane. Um, and so that, we talked about the pitches being a 10/12 or 12/12 pitch. The logo possibly coming down onto the stone right over the doorway would be nice, and that could be lit by the, the soffit that could be belled when you, if you, if you were to shingle that gable and not mirror the clapboard siding that is on the existing plaza to make it stand alone and be a little different. And that could be done with, um, you know, the same, same kind of hardy board shake. That's, and then, let's see, the, like, just a little bit of the landscaping could help create some, some of the blinds to it and, um, that was pretty much, that's pretty much my comments.
Uh, those were significant comments, thank you.
They are.
They are.
I was very
It's, it's very nice, it's, it's, I mean, it's a lovely drawing, it's something that, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that budget-wise we can do this, but we're gonna have to go back and regroup with the credit union and see what we can do, but it's a lot more than what we were looking to put into a building that they don't own.
Let, let, yeah, um, let, before I go on to Ms. Dexter, I do have to just say, one of the things that Mr. Waters has done, I, that's sort of like a dental or a rafter end or something there, right below, that marries very well into the architecture that we'd like to see more of in Hyde Park.
Oh, yeah.
Um, when we were grappling with this, when Stop &amp; Shop was before us, the architect was out of, I think Connecticut, and, you know, he said, what are you looking for, which we're not supposed to tell them what, how to design it, per se, but we told them to look at larger buildings and we directed them specifically to Valid Avenue Elementary. And so what, because it's two-story or three-story, I should say, so it's a, it's a massive kind of big structure like the, the main plaza is. And this actually incorporates some of the elements from Valid Avenue Elementary, which I did not tell you to go to, even better than what the product that we wound up having, so, uh, I need to digest this myself a little bit. Ms. Dexter, let me go on to you.
Thanks, that's all right. Thank you for meeting with, offline and, and talking and discussing our concerns. I really had not realized, you know, just how, I, I agree with Mr. Waters and I really like his design, and I do understand, you know, you're taking a building, you're just trying to improve it, you're not redoing it, you're not knocking it down, you're not starting from scratch, but it is, it's a, it's a box, it's a big huge box with a flat roof, and when this, this front, the side view is just so weird because it's just this big thing sitting on the roof. And you can see some of it from your, let's see, that would be the drive-through elevation, that's your west elevation, you can just kind of see this thing peeking up at the top. And it, it just, it looks strange to me, and we have to take into account that the parks are right behind you. This, this is one of the few buildings in Hyde Park where you have, every single side is visible to everybody. And I really like the changes that you've made. I hadn't realized, as, as you were explaining about the east elevation, how that's just a, like a security door or something that doesn't get used. I, I, I get it at that point, that that, you've dressed it up a little bit, it's better than it was, I think I'd be okay with just leaving it like that. But just that front facade is just so huge and it's just like you're perching it right on top. It's, it does look like the Wild, Wild West, it looks like the fake, the false fronts. And what Mr. Waters has done is tried to show you that maybe there's a way to just kind of bring it forward, drop it down a little bit, try to incorporate it, just build a new porch, just basically build a new porch somehow, drop that peak. I really like the quadrifile, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also agree, if you look at the gas station that's on the other end of the plaza, I know it's just a gas station, but this board spent a lot of time working with the applicants for, for the gas station to try to, again, make it look a little less just like a gas station. I think they did a nice job. I mean, it really is just a canopy, but there's some elements on there and it would be nice to maybe mimic that, so that on either side of this plaza, you now have these elements that tie the whole plaza together. And I think that's what, this is an opportunity to tie this building, which used to be the best-looking building in the plaza for many years, to now tie it in with, with the extensive refacing that was done with, with the old plaza. So whatever you can do, I'm just still not happy with this, with the, the arch that you've put in the front and just set it on the roof. I do like everything else that you've done, I like, I forget the term that you did, but what's the stuff that they put at the top here?
EFS.
The EFS.
EFS.
EFS, EFS. That made, that makes a huge improvement too, because that hides a lot of the mechanicals that are on the roof, but again, if you could bring that somehow forward, and that glass canopy, I'm just not a big fan of it, doesn't represent Hyde Park to me at all, never has.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But otherwise, I, I can see you guys are really trying and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
And I'd have to thank you for making all the changes you did and, and seeing Mr. Waters' design here, it's magnificent, but I, I understand the, you know, the economical factors and, you know, practicality. If maybe just try to look at some ideas and just bringing that down a little bit if you can, rather than the whole facade. And a note about the back where the knee wall is, rather than a fence, maybe look at a hedgerow, like a service berry, or something like that to, so it's not more structure.
Mm-hmm.
And it allows us to add some more landscaping to the plan.
And service berries, low maintenance.
Yeah.
Like no maintenance, seriously. That's a native, it's easy, it attracts birds and provides berries for butterflies in the fall.
That's a great idea, thank you.
And thank you, Chris, those are great, those are great comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Napoli?
It's always helpful to have a landscape designer on the board.
Yes.
I basically concur with everything that's been said, but in degrees. I'm sure if you were given a budget that could design this, you would have also, nothing against Mr. Waters. You don't have a say on your budget. I do, though, do, would love to be able to see, if possible, taking the important elements, incorporating them. I don't know how far your budget goes, but I think if you go back to the bank and they may need to reconsider the project and how much they're willing to invest, I do understand they do not own the building, they will never own the building, but sometimes if, if something's brought to your attention, they can relook and they, you know, they may say, you know, this is worth considering, we may just have to postpone it a little bit, let's readjust our finances. Maury, Architects, or Clever Architects, and I have full faith that you will be able to incorporate the best of the designs.
Thank you.
Sing system, thank you, okay. Would you like to make a comment now? Yes, I, I, that was a good signal.
I was clearing my throat.
Uh-huh, sure.
Not because I wanted to comment, but I do want to comment. It's been great listening to, to you guys and to the board and it's helped me sort of pull my, pull my thoughts together more. I, I love what you, what you drew, Mr. Waters. Um, not that I don't, I feel like who's my favorite kid, but, um, but it does, I, I think what other board members have said about it, you know, in a perfect world with a, with a perfect budget, the, the proposed, your proposed drawing make, makes me think a little bit about, um, Mr. Blandings builds his dream house and the wife who just wants a drain in the garden room, you know, and doesn't realize the, you know, all of the infrastructure that has to go into it. And, and, and I would love to see this, that, but I recognize, again, that budgets are not unlimited. So I've been sitting here looking and of course my, my dream would be that the bank who has invested large amounts of money expanding to many other buildings in the Hudson Valley would see fit to building something really quite beautiful here in Hyde Park. Short of that, I think that, um, things that I would be willing to pull back on are decorative elements at service doors. I think buildings throughout history have, you know, tradition of just make that service door blend in, as long as it blended in some nice way, but it doesn't need to be pulled out visually. In the front, the things that really make a difference between what's proposed here and Mr. Waters' drawing is dropping that roof down, the dentil molding, um, and I'm looking at this wondering, I do a lot, a lot of walking in the village, and so I know there is a sidewalk in front of this bank, and I would hate to see that go away or be obstructed. Since there is a covered walkway in the rest of the plaza, um, if you pulled the roof out and did it like a, a bigger portico with stone columns instead of building an entire structure there, so take that glass roof off, then you would have that pulled-out element without perhaps quite as much of the cost, and you could continue it by covering your walkway. Just, just a thought.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Murphy, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I guess I do. I seldom do, I, I think it's a person's, uh, personal choice on a building and architecture, but I have to say that, um, when the building was built, it kind of reminded me of 1960's school. I, and, um, I, I, and I'm not that sensitive to it, but, um, I think it needs a lot of love.
Mm-hmm.
I, and maybe if we budget, speaking as a customer, it's not gonna be, break, make or break me one way or another, but I think the image that the credit union wants to portray in a town that keeps getting more banks is one that it belongs, that's all.
That is a very sensitively phrased statement from you, Mr. Murphy, thank you.
Okay.
Before I kind of wrap things up, would there, would someone from the public like to speak about this application? Yes, do you guys mind, you can just move to the side chairs. And come sit down. So here's the process, just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Steve Minnermeyer, I'm actually a resident on Kessler Road.
I didn't know that's where you lived.
I am one of two residents.
You and the Roosevelt, David and Manuela.
Uh, they, they don't actually adjoin the Azarian property, whereas I share a property line with them and so do my, my neighbors. So, um, I've lived in that neighborhood for 17 years and I would like to point out that for probably a dozen years, the first dozen years that I lived there, the bright shining spot in that plaza was the credit union. I, I think they've maintained and they're, I consider them an anchor of that plaza. I sit on a board myself and I understand your point of view, but as a customer of the credit union, I'm also concerned about the cost of some of the suggestions you're making. And I, recently I've been looking for a car loan for my son who's buying his first car, and I can tell you that the credit union is the first place we went, because of the favorable terms, because of the service they provide, because of the fact that it's a membership organization, and I think that they really serve a, a, a great purpose in the town, and I think that they're really dedicated to the town. Certainly, they don't have as many customers as they used to when IBM was a much stronger presence in the Hudson Valley, but I think that they've also broadened their customer base. I can also say, you know, among the minute detail that was discussed here, and I'm impressed with the amount of detail that, that you go through, having driven past that building almost every day for the last 17 years, you don't see that building until you turn on a Kessler. And so, asking these people to spend money to dress up the, the east side of the building doesn't seem like the best use of, of doesn't seem like the best use of, of their resources. Um, I would also like to point out that, uh, they have been very good neighbors, they maintain their property, um, they are quiet, um, so, and, and again, those are things that you cannot say about the rest of the Azarian plaza, or the way they've maintained it. Um, and I don't have good things to say about Mr. Azarian in general, and his dedication to our community, whereas contrast against that, against the Hudson Valley Credit Union. So, um, I, I'm strongly in favor of the, the planning and the renovations that they're talking about here. Um, I like many of the, the points that were made here. Again, um, I'm not here, this is the first time I've been here in, in a decade or more. Um, so I would, I suppose, ask you as a citizen of the, the, the town, to go a little easy when you're suggesting, um, possibly expensive upgrades and changes to their plans. But thank you for listening to me, I appreciate the opportunity.
No, thank you, Mr. Minnermeyer. And the board you sit on, I believe, is the Hyde Park Central School District Board.
Yes, that's true. Please don't hold it against me.
We don't. I do want to just so, anybody else in the public like to speak? Okay, there being none for the time being. Let me just make a.
Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, I would.
Councilman Ray, please come.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks. Hang on. I was glad to see David Ray, 33 South Drive. Um, it's in my ward, I'm the councilman there too. Um, the credit union, I think as Chan said, or no, maybe it wasn't Chan, said it was the brightest building in there for a long time, and the other part of the mall was in various forms of decay, you know, with Barkers or James, whoever was in there, and the junk behind the place, and it was terrible. And the same owner, Azarian owned it. I agree with Steve, you know, they do take care of that property there. And to put a financial burden, like Mr. Waters presented, you know, I don't know what it's going to cost, but it would be nice, but I would hate to put them in jeopardy of booming or having to say, we can't do it. You know, it's a service to their customers, the drive-through, um, that every bank has. It's very convenient, I think they need that for, you know, to, to stay prosperous. They're very good people and they are a member, uh, union, and like they were, a lot busier when IBM was in full swing here. So anything to make them move or discourage them from doing it, you know, would be, I'd be against that. I think they're good neighbors, uh, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? So let me just clarify a couple of things first for the audience's edification here. Um, it is not appropriate for the planning board to consider cost or budget. I need to make sure I say that clearly, because we, we could be told by every person up here, I can't afford that. What we're supposed to be doing is enforcing the code. Having said that, there are plenty of sections of code in the 108-4.5G. It's sick that I've memorized those numbers. But, and by the way, I've been up here 10 years, so it's, I think you've been more than a decade, Mr. Minnermeyer, but, uh, and I do appreciate everyone's comments and making these statements, because we also, having made that comment, we do try to be sensitive to some of what, some of the budgetary requirements. I, I promise you, we don't ever ask anybody to build a Taj Mahal. And while what Mr. Waters, his frankly really gorgeous design, or to quote Mr. Deesing, magnificent, um, maybe it is reaching too high pie in the sky, too big of a dream house, uh, whatever, but it's, what this is meant to do is create a dialogue back with the applicants to say, can you go take one more revision, take a look at this and look at your budget? Because we're not unreasonable. And when I do see even, quite frankly, I'm not very good at architecture. I try, so when I first looked at this, I thought, wow, it's great! And I do also want to say that the applicants originally didn't even want to do this. I'm aware that all you want to do is add a drive-through to make it easier for your customers. And while we're supposed to not be a car-oriented town, I've talked to too many young mothers who tell me that they love drive-throughs for everything they can get. So, we also want to encourage the safety and welfare of our, of our residents, including young families, so I, we're, there's no objections to the drive-through here. That matter, when Ms. Moss and I met with you offline initially, you had a flat roof there and we're like, oh, sure, fine. Um, I know Mr. Azarian's the one who drug you through this. Having said that, at the same time, now that you've kind of started the process, it's like opening Pandora's box. When I see prettier, I'm like, ooh, can you? So to echo what you heard from many of my colleagues tonight, I do think that if you can look at it again, and I know we're, we're wasting budget money right now on soft costs like design, if you can take a look at it again to drop that gable, make the entrance more prominent, uh, comport with that section of the code that now this is over 100 feet, that it would have more articulation, I guess I'll call it, or I call it 3D-ing it, where it comes forward, I think that would be an improvement. The other thing that I want to say is the county, uh, planning letter really was drawing attention to, um, let's see if I can use that little area there, how thin it is. I was going to say that if we were going to, if everybody was happy, you could extend that north to where that mechanical is, and maybe it wouldn't look so thin and clumsy. It looks like it's wearing a tiara and ready to topple over to me. But if you reduce it, it's not, the, the height is not going to be so noticeable as that wow, wow, west kind of facade that Ms. Dexter referred to. Like I said, I appreciate the fact that you showed us the mechanicals, because now I could see how far back it could go, but if we can tweak it one more time, I think we're there. I, I did definitely get the idea from all the board's comments that you're pretty far along, and that it's now just trying to make sure that we're not putting lipstick on the pigs, so to speak, but making it into the silk purse out of the sow's ear. I'm mixing metaphors there. Um, I, I personally do agree, now that I've seen a design that doesn't have the glass canopy, that that gets rid of the last of the 70's look. I do appreciate what Ms. Kane had to say too about better knitting it together with the walkway across the way as well. And I can certainly say that even though I would, I think that the, rather than draw attention to the roof over the drive-through, I like to think of that as now it's a longer building and it's actually speaking to the long width of the buildings over there, so I don't mind drawing attention to the roof. But if it comes down to the budget is leave that drive-through roof the way it is so we can maybe improve that entry, go to the entry, ignore that roof, because it's not as important to get the entryway right. And again, Mr. Murphy is correct, you know, architecture is subjective, all aesthetics are, but I do think that by the, some of the elements of this design do better marry it to the existing architecture that we hope to promote in Hyde Park. Like I said, just even the addition of the dentil made it, made me think this building doesn't look so modern, because you've put dentil where a glass sort of canopy is now that, that definitely shows the age of the structure. But we do want you to do the project, we don't want, we don't want them going anywhere, we don't want to ever lose any business in Hyde Park. Uh, let me make sure I underscore that. So we will be sensitive to whatever you come back with next time, and if you'd like to have a quick meeting, if you do, after you meet, uh, let us know. I can set something up before the next meeting. And so I guess we should continue this to May the 18th?
Yes.
So move.
Thank, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So just stay in touch. I, I need to regroup. Thank you very much, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Waters, for taking so much time on this application. No, it had to be, or unless you can just pull these visions out of your.
Out of my head.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you. That's what I, that's what I brought.
He also wants to write him, he goes, you coming? You coming? You know, move on. Put it in the file.
Good idea. Hey, Michael. I think so.
Oh, mine's right here.
No, there shouldn't be. If you want to read this, this is.
Thank you, everybody in the audience, for your forbearance from that rather long discussion. Uh, obviously, as Mr. Minnermeyer said, you can see we do try to work with people, but to make sure that we get the best development we can. The next item on the agenda is new public hearing for what we call Crofton Muse, uh, now our last known as Carriage Trails at, at the town center at Hyde Park. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So as a reminder, the applicant is seeking an additional site plan extension, not to go back into too long of the history, we have the representative here, but the original owners have backed out. The property was foreclosed upon by the lender, Key Bank. Key Bank is now aggressively marketing the property at a price that looks like it can be sold. The applicants are indeed, they've started substantial construction, they just never have been able to finish within the original two-year period. It's up to the discretion of the planning board to continue to move that time out for you to complete. We're aware that if projects like this, that are so large with that many housing, that's going to be market-based as well, so we'll probably be entertaining more extensions in the future. Uh, but in the interim, this seems logical, and just as a reminder for, to put into the record and for the board and the audience, we did, before an extension was granted, uh, the last extension, we did require the applicant, as we have been doing, for environmentally sensitive properties like this, to have the wetlands redelineated and recertified by the DEC, which was all done. So, um, at this point, we should be able to reaffirm seeker and consider the approval. Before I open it to the audience, any comments from the consultants, Pete or Victoria?
No.
Any comments from the board or questions?
No.
No.
Would anyone from the audience like to speak about this application? We had a member last time, so I don't hear one. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file?
I do. To grant a 12-month extension of time to complete construction, Carriage Trail at Town Center, May 4th, 2016, Resolution 16-96 GG. I'm just going to read the first one or two, just to give you the historical perspective. Whereas on October 15th, 2003, the formal applicant, Sarkar LLC, was granted conditional final site plan approval for 317-unit development in the Neighborhood Core District, uh, formerly known as Crofton Muse, and now identified as Carriage Trail at Town Center. And then whereas on September 20th, 2006, by resolution, the applicant was granted a six extension in time. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the code, the planning board hereby grants a 12-month extension of time in which the applicant must complete construction too and including July 17th of 2017, subject to the following conditions: Key Bank shall submit a new NOI for the SWPPP to the town of Hyde, town, oh, I'm sorry, to the town for signature within 30 days and supply and apply for a local storm water permit. Be it further resolved that if and when agreement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority is reached, regarding or relating to the water line, all legal agreements and/or documents created in conjunction with the agreement shall be submitted to the town attorney and the planning board attorney for approval. Number two, before a building permit may be issued for any improvements to the property, the applicant shall submit a letter of credit or other equivalent security in the amount of 676,000.
No, million. Oh, thousand, sorry.
It is thousand, yeah.
Yes, that's what we need.
Thousand, yeah. A million, be nice. Et cetera, et cetera, as required by Resolution 16-96 CC, and again in Resolution 16-96 EE, subject to review by the town attorney as to form, sufficiency, and manner of execution. Item three, before a building permit may be issued for any improvements on the property, the applicant shall repair and reinstall all Blandings Turtle mitigation measures. Four, no building permit shall be issued until the applicant has submitted an updated SWPPP to the town, which is acceptable to the planning board engineer and storm water management officer, and has applied for a local storm water permit. And number five, no certificate of occupancy for the last completed structure on the site shall be issued until an as-built survey has been submitted to the zoning administrator. There will be no written or formal notification from the planning board office to the applicant as, at such time as the extension expires. Any request for an extension of the deadlines set forth herein must be submitted to the planning board at least 30 days in advance of said dates. Second.
Michael, I have a comment, sorry.
Go right ahead.
Um, in regards to, uh, number, number two, um, I don't know what, uh, the resolutions are there, I don't, um, remember them, but, um, if the applicant's going to start up again, uh, what we normally do is we take a look and see what work has been.
It's already been reduced.
Completed.
It's already been reduced.
It's already been, uh, reduced.
We had a very long meeting at the offices of Gellerton Klein when Linda Murray was our attorney. It was me, Mr. McGann, you, Mr. Moishziv, Mr. Andros. Aren't you impressed that I can remember all these things? Because it was 10 years ago.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
We, we, at that time, those resolutions were the ones that were created to reduce based on work done at that point. So these resolutions represent the amount that they'll have to put up, uh, rebond for, so to speak.
Okay, I mean, since it was that long ago, is there some way we can put something in here that says that, uh, I'd have the opportunity to look at it again, being that there's been so much, you know, time.
I'm looking at Ms. Polidoro. I think it's a great idea, but I'm looking at Ms. Polidoro for.
So we can reword it to say, or other equivalent security in amount of 676,000 or other amount, um, as required by the planning board engineer?
Yeah, that's fine. Just want to leave it a little open in case, you know, we need to, I commended, it has been a while.
I guess what you're saying is it might be, it might cost more to, to finish the improvements.
Please change.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I'm adding underneath there, uh, or other amount as required by planning board engineer. Is that satisfied? I'll second as amended.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and just for the audience's edification, the NOI is a notice of intent and the SWPPP is a storm water pollution prevention plan, and the applicant is aware that, uh, basically, once you start your storm water management system, there's, you're supposed to be doing periodic inspections, et cetera, so it's just a way to get that going back again, that's all.
Any other thing, by way of clarification? Each time when I did a whereas, that represented a historical line item that we have tracked going all the way back through 2002. I believe this may be the oldest one that we've ever dealt with here on the planning board.
It is, it's the oldest open application we have, so, and we're not blaming you, thank you for coming back.
No, that was just, I was just doing that for clarification, so people understood what that was.
And by the way, remember my, my director down in the basement will have my neck if you, if I allow you to speak without coming to the microphone, so just, yes, thank you for coming out and have a safe drive back.
And good luck with it.
The next item on the agenda is another request for an extension, not one nearly so old, however. Jeffrey Groves Estates, uh, the applicant is seeking extension of the site plan approval. As a, as a reminder, um, this project involved both site plan approval, because there was multifamily or townhouses approved, as well as a subdivision for nine single-family home lots. The applicant has indicated that one of the reasons why he needs the extension is that he's still working with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority over changes to the proposed septic system. In addition, they're looking to remove the nine single-family housing lots, add a little bit more, I believe it's three extra units, I'm not positive, I think it's up to 12, for the townhouses, and the reason why we haven't seen that new application is because the, uh, working with DCWWA to drive some of the design elements of what you're proposing, so.
Good evening, uh, members of the board, Louis Kaufman for the applicant.
You are the applicant.
I am the applicant. Well, I'm not North Cross LLC, but anyhow, um, yeah, that, well stated. We are, uh, in the process, we actually have a design in mind, and we're working through the process with DOH and DCWWA, at which time we hope to, you know, proceed. We also have what was shown as an informal concept plan last year. Unfortunately, I We also have what was shown as an informal concept plan last year, unfortunately, last year, and that, you know, and that, we, you know, and that was a more feasible plan where we eliminated the nine single-family lots, which were spread out with lots of driveway and things of that nature, consolidated into two buildings similar to the 38 units that we have already, and they are, and that, the amount of the units are within the density requirements, so I have plans, but they're not so, they're not formal, so, you know, if you were interested in looking at it, I had it, but, you know, we were going to come in with a more formal application for this revision that I'm describing, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Once you get, once you work your way through DCWA, you should be able to. I know you've already been working with engineer and have, as you said, draft plans applied. So, I also just want to state into the record, since we have two newer members, that this is another site that we did have the wetland examined, the boundaries just looked at to make sure that they hadn't migrated, because that's what wetlands do. This did not require certification, because I don't believe it's a DEC wetland, we just made certain that it had been reflagged by a professional.
Right.
So, and that was prior to your last extension request, so I don't have any other comments. Any comments from the consultants? Any comments or questions from the board, from Mr. Kaufman? Okay. This does not require, wait, we're in a public hearing, should I ask if anybody wants to speak? There being no one. Did I open it?
I think we need to open it.
May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Aye. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to speak about this application, from the public? There being none, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's why I forget about it, because we haven't had anybody commenting on this plan in forever.
Okay, thank you.
Who has this file?
That'd be me.
Thank you, Mr....
Resolution to grant one-year extension of all deadlines pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the town code. Resolution number-68-12D, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the code, of the time in which the applicant must commence construction two and including June 14th, 2017, and at the time in which to complete the construction two and including June 14th, 2018, and there will be no written or verbal notification from the planning board office to the applicant at such time as the extension expires. Any request for an extension of deadlines set forth herein must be submitted to the planning board at least 30 days in advance of said dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. By the way, I was just thinking, with all these extensions, how do you keep track of this? Some like timer buzz on your computer?
I didn't, if you recall, a couple of years ago, and it's like...
Yes, that's true.
So, I, there's no, you know, I get no commendations for this one.
The reason why I ask is, sometimes I'll say to our secretary, you know, wait, what about this application? And she'll look, because I don't have them all, I don't have a calendar...
Well, I love the opportunity to speak to Ms. Nap, so I...
Thank you, your shovel rests to the end. Safe drive back. The next item on the agenda is Camp Victory Lake. The applicants are proposing a facade change.
I think we have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Matthews Auto Sales, new business. The applicant is seeking an extension of the time in which to meet conditions of site plan approval, so I can sign. Good evening, Mr. Neshwat.
How are you?
This does not require a public hearing, so we're prepared to take action tonight, right?
We are.
It's just, if everyone saw the pictures that Mr. Sotero took, it's just one condition that hasn't been met fully, thank you. So this will give you the time to clean up the rest of the debris from the site, and I believe otherwise we're close to being ready to go to sign the map.
Ready to go.
And we're considering, considering the request timely, because the plans were actually in the office...
Well before...
Well before the time expired, awaiting signature, it's just that they hadn't confirmed satisfaction of the conditions.
Right, everyone follow that?
Yep.
Thank you, because they were submitted well before the, the approval lapsed, so as long as they were submitted beforehand with a request, we're okay. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Neshwat?
I just wanted to ask a question about the tractor, the grass tractor. We're not allowed to put any gas equipment inside the storage room, and I wanted to see if I can just leave it in the lawn outside.
Does it work, the tractor?
Yeah, the tractor works.
I mean, and then you can put it up, I mean, if you just, if you just take it out of, you know, the field, and then put it up closer to, you know, the building, which you're going to be using.
Yeah, I can do that.
I thought I felt a jolt there for a minute.
We're going to have to hotwire the seats.
Can you state that again for, so that the audience...
So, you know, the tractor, the tractor that's in, you know, the back, that's in the middle, middle of the field. Why don't you just take it and put it, after you clean more of the stuff out away from the building, just put it up next to the building? So what you're saying is you use the tractor to mow around there?
Right.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We really cleaned everything, so we'll just move, I'll move the tractor.
That's just it, the tractor there? Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I don't think that's a big issue, it was more of the...
No, I just wasn't sure if it even worked, that's all.
Yeah, the debris.
If it works, just bring, yeah, just bring it up against the building, that's fine.
As you're facing the back of the building on the right-hand side, where the, it slopes down to the...
Well, you're going to get buzzed.
There was the dumpster enclosure there, but tucked next to the building, you know, there were some garage doors there, you can't keep anything in there?
Yeah, we cleaned everything up.
Okay, but that would be a great place to, to keep it.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Oh, you mean the tractor?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it'd be hidden from view, because it drops off there, right, right.
Right.
And it would be, you know, have easy access to the rest of the property.
Thank you, what a good memory you have for how that property looks.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution granting the extension of time to meet conditions of amended site plan approval for Matthews Auto Sale, Resolution 15-21B, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the applicant a 90-day extension of the time to meet the conditions of amended site, excuse me, site plan approval as set forth in Resolution 15-21A to July 5th of 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, so if you think everything's cleaned up, move that tractor to the side of the building, it can be hidden.
I can go take a look at it, once I know.
And we'll let Mrs. Sotero take, take a picture, and if so, that was the only remaining item, so we can go ahead and get me to sign, I can sign that site plan within the week.
Thank you.
I can't wait. Believe me, every time I drive by the building now, I keep thinking, oh, it's going to be looking so nice soon, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is now Camp Victory Lake. The applicants are seeking approval, a site plan amendment to reclad what used to be, I believe, a motel?
Yes.
That's what it appears like? Is anyone here from the applicant? Ah ha! Come on up and please state your name for the record, Namza, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christian Trocky, I am administration manager at Lowe's Home Improvement.
And thank you, my name is Steve Alec, I'm the project specialist exteriors for the Lowe store down in Gibson.
Oh my goodness, we got very fancy here, thank you.
Fancy tiles, not much.
Okay. Okay, so, just a couple of quick questions, you're just proposing, you're only going to reclad the existing, it's like a motel, no other structures around the side?
No, it's just, just the hotel.
That's what I thought. And, anybody else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Paladaro.
Just for the next submission, it doesn't look like the owner of the site signed the Could you just make sure that you have owner authorization?
It's owned by Seventh Day Adventists, the Northeast chapter, I believe.
Yes, that's right.
That's correct. I've met with, I've met with the, I don't know if she's still the president, there was a female president for a while, I can't remember, but at any rate, I know that the, that they're, they have plans for doing more with the site gradually, but of course, being a religious organization, they have to raise money. In the meantime, I don't think this is going to be visible, there's only one issue, you're on a county road, and so by state law, we can't take action until we refer this to Dutchess County Planning. I doubt that they're going to have any comments whatsoever, but, Ms. Paladaro, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is a site plan amendment, unless we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, we have to set a public hearing?
Correct, and I don't believe she...
She did not recommend the waiver, but it also, because county planning has three days, if we go ahead and set the public hearing for May the...
18th.
18th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then what we can do is beg Ms. LeVaran Wayat County Planning for expedited review, and, in the meantime, can you make certain that we have some sort of authorization from the owner?
Yeah.
Authorizing you to represent them? And, I'm going to just go on a limb and guess that we're not going to have any public comment about this either, so if you don't want to come back yourselves in two weeks, you don't have to, as long as there's a way for me to contact you if there's some controversy that arises, which I can't imagine, you don't have to make it here and sit through another long meeting, so, because it's, this is pretty pro forma, it's just a reclading. Like I said, because it's on a county road, it's state law that requires it, so, do we have a resolution prepared for this?
We do have a resolution prepared, and at this point, we can cross off item three, which was scheduling the public hearing, since the board already did that.
Thank you, who has this file?
I do. Resolution typing action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Camp Victory Lake, vinyl siding installation, 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 sorry, date is May 4th, 2016, Resolution number 16-22, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type-two action under seeker, and two, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Like I said, you don't have to be here for the public hearing, because I don't anticipate there being much comment. If we don't hear back from county planning at that public hearing, we'll have to continue it, because by law, they do have three days. This is so minor, I, the county planning office, they, they have something called sheds, roofs, and porches. This would fall into that category, it's not going to get much review. In the interim, I was reminded by one of the vice chairs, Ms. Dexter, that Ms. Moss, our zoning administrator, normally requires samples, like what siding, like a piece of the siding, the color that's proposed. I thought she said you've dropped that off already, but can you check with her in the office? If you noticed, for the Federal Credit Union, they had little samples, that's what she requires now.
Okay.
And if this seems picky, you, and I can only explain it to you, that in the past, where planning boards did not require this, if someone wanted to go and paint the building afterwards Pepto-Bismol pink with maroon siding, they could, because there was no record of what it was, so, once we started getting complaints from the citizens, we now require it automatically, and we're supposed to under the code anyway, so, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks for your time, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, have a good night.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver requested by the Neshwats for construction of a new single-family dwelling at 13 Hyler Glen. Because this is in a statewide area of significant, it requires a site plan review, we have a waiver recommendation from the zoning administrator. I'd like to point out that, just so everybody knows, hey, thank you both, we did, the town applied for a grant, and it's not official, but I'm told that we did get it. The grant is from, ironically, the estuary program, but it's because the SAS is done both so that we review things that are visible from both the two historic sites, but also from the river. In this case, this isn't adjacent to the Vanderbilt estate, nor is it adjacent to the Roosevelt Library and Home, it's just, it's potentially visible from the river, so, what the grant's going to do is enable the town to go through and take a look and refine where that SAS is, the statewide area of significant, so that we're going to get rid of, I think about nine tenths of these site plan waivers. And, again, while this is not anything glamorous, it's going to, no, this one will be done in time, because we haven't, we don't have formal word, we just got tentative word that we got it, but this will be, something that's going to be a lot easier on regular residents who want to put up things like porches, roofs, et cetera.
Solar panels.
Solar panels, all that will no longer have to come through this, and will also save residents money, because even if it's a minimal fee for a site plan waiver, it's still 50 bucks. So the town will be saying goodbye to some revenue, but we're making a lot of people happy, so congratulations to the town board for doing that.
Excellent.
Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you, Chris.
Neshwat, site plan waiver, there's no resolution number, whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Stephen Neshwat on March 23rd, 2016, and received March 31st, 2016, for vacant property known as Lot 13 of Hyler Glen Subdivision Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled "Neshwat Residence Lot Number 13, Hyler Glen Subdivision Regarding a Specific Request As Submitted on March 31st, 2016 and As Specified in a Building Elevation Submitted."
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and by the way, you can read pretty quickly too, Chris.
Well, thank you.
We need to give you all the long resolutions.
We used to give them all the EAFs, but...
Yes.
Those have been limited lately.
The next two items on the agenda are sign permit recommendations, so the zoning administrator can issue sign permits to National Martial Arts. One is for a new tenant panel and the freestanding sign at this site, the other is for a wall sign. Location is 473 Violet Avenue, this is next to Shelley's Deli. And do you want to come up and speak for a moment into the microphone?
Hi, I am Jessica McKeown from Fast Signs, Mr. Lacy couldn't be here this evening, he's teaching a class right now.
Can you pronounce his first name for me?
Christian.
Okay, because in our resolution, it says Scheistian, and I kept thinking that that has to be a misspelling, it's, it's Christian, not C-H-E, but C-H-R, so, let's all, whoever has this, these two resolutions, make sure we change that from Scheistian to Christian, that's the reason why I asked you up. And, is this a new business, or is it already existing and just changing names?
Um, it is a new business, it was previously a martial arts studio as well.
But a different kind, I'm guessing.
Yep, different business.
So, we're very happy to welcome a new business into town, and I don't think anybody has any questions, because both signs are code compliant.
I made sure they were.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. So, Ms. Can you have these files?
Yes, I do.
And thank you for making that correction.
I am, I realized I had both, so I was making it on both.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Oops, excuse me. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3, subsection A, subsection four, subsection D. Resolution 16-25, whereas, whereas, be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for National Martial Arts as submitted by Christian Lacy on April 7th, 2016, and drawing dated submitted by Jessica Mc...
McKeown.
McKeown, of Fast Signs with the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries.
And then we have 20, Resolution 16-25A, whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning administrator issue the sign permit for National Martial Arts as submitted by Christian Lacy on April 7th, 2016, and drawing dated by submit, drawing dated submitted by Jessica McKeown of Fast Sign with the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you for staying so patiently.
Not a problem.
Have we seen you here before, the board?
No, I've, I actually work for Christine Palmer as well.
That's why you looked familiar to me, of course.
I spent an entire day with you.
You did, my wedding, okay. So, just so you know, you, because I kept thinking, I know her, I know her. You, when you go forward for signs, if, if we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, you usually don't have to sit here, so, just to save you some time and money.
I appreciate that.
Well, and we appreciate you sitting here the whole time, so, and thank you for, we also got to correct Mr. Lacy's first name as well.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
You too.
Pinultimate item on the agenda is a response to proposed local law D. I did not prepare a letter, because I wanted to make sure that we all had a good understanding of what's proposed. So I was incorrect. It wasn't just that there would be a way to acquire sidewalks on sites on Route nine that are multifamily. But also, if you saw the memo from Ms. Moss, properties out in the green belt, now that we've had the average density zoning for a while, you can have multiple houses on a single shared driveway. There is a maximum, but you can have multiple. Ms. Moss was worried that in those instances, two things. One, there would be no trigger to require a rec fee, even though there would be additional burden on our recreation facilities. Because if the lot is exist and is large, there's no subdivision requirement to put, as long as they have the right density, they can put as many single-family homes as they want, rent them out, whatever. So that would cure that. Also, as she wrote, there's, if there's no site plan approval, then there's no requirement that, I think the, her idea was maybe if someone wanted to put, say, five rental homes on one driveway lot, that's the maximum, they would be able to, and then there would be, if residents had a problem with maintenance of the road, there'd be no way for us to say there's, someone has, there has to be some entity that has to maintain it. So there's just a few elements that in her, this was driven by her, in other words, by the zoning administrator to the town board. And in this case, she did not anticipate that we would go through a full site plan review. We would take the elements that she, and obviously we, we'd say to be most relevant and bring those forward, i.e. the rec fee, if there's any issue about shared driveways, who's gonna maintain it in the winter, et cetera. Particularly in other words, if they're, this is the deal, is they'd have to be rented because they, as far as I know, they couldn't be owned because you couldn't have multiple owners of different houses on one subdivision site. Because you can't, you'd have to still go through subdivision. So it'd be really for rentals, in other words. That's all. And I think her fear was is that you might have someone who might be less scrupulous about, once they got everything rented, maintaining everything. So you might have one person contracting to only snowplow, say, the portion that goes up to their house and nobody else, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that was the impetus behind it. And once I talked to Tad, I had a better understanding myself of it. So...
Thank you.
Yeah. And just so that, if you notice, it exempts if they're building less than four, I believe it is, dwelling units. It's exempt from site plan because they want to stop smaller projects from coming forward. So in essence, you would, because we allow multifamily in neighborhoods, and neighborhoods come up to nine and nine G, if you had multifamily, which is allowed. So if you wanted to have like a small apartment complex or say four, two-family units, they would be required to come through and we could get maybe then a sidewalk so that we would have complete streets, as they're called, so that they're interconnected. Because otherwise with a single-family house, well, that still would occur, but if you have multifamily, you have the opportunity to have the sidewalk. So it's basically, and it's only anticipated this would be on nine or nine G because we don't require sidewalks within neighborhoods themselves. So... Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, then should I, should I write a letter recommending that they...
I, I'd make a motion to authorize the chairman to, to write a letter of recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only comment I would add is, you know, that I think you should include in that, you're assuming or presuming it will be conformance or addressing all of Tad's concerns.
Oh, yeah. Well, Tad, basically, to get back and add that, just in essence, you're right.
Right. Well, I, I think we shouldn't agree to it unless Tad's, the things have been addressed.
That's, no, you're right. You're right. You're right. You're right. You're right. Thank you.
I have a small comment, which is probably off-topic, but I wish they'd pursue streamlining some of these things to move, like the facades, for the commercial stuff, to make it easier. We seem to be able to put more stringent things in thing, in making things easier kind of gets put off on the back burner. So I just wish that we would tackle that with the same zeal.
Before I respond to that, let me first just get a vote. Is, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So I know we, we took a little bit longer time on this project, but I want to refer back to the relative speed in which Mr. Lees was able to do Havlin Shopping Center.
Yep.
All that was is a, is a facadeic, you know, change. The problem with, I think that's arisen here is that this is a bigger change as proposed. I mean, you're really taking a squat, flat box building and kind of dress it up like a wedding cake.
But they're adding a drive-through.
That's what I'm saying.
They're doing all kinds of elements that change the character.
The easiest way to get through, I think, to streamline is if you say, here's my proposal. This is all I'm proposing. You know, is to add this element here, this element here. And in working with Mr. Westermeyer, our building inspector, if you recall, the plaza, I, I think we just call it Park Plaza, or Park Beverage Plaza, it's where Drabio Gilz is and the, the...
Giggles.
Yes.
Giggles and the, so they did a facade change that did not require a building permit. And to explain why, it's because that was brick, and they put stone fascia on it instead. And so Don looked at it and said, oh, this is already a weight-bearing wall. So, and we don't require, there's no building permit required to change your roof, to improve to the, so there can be to reface it. If it's, if it's wood, then it's gonna go to a heavy stone facade, then he has to analyze other things. So there are ways to do it, but it, part of it, it just depends on the complexity of the job. In his case, because he, they came to us and he said, to Tad and I, they said, do we need a site plan approval? And I said, let's check and see if we need a building permit. And Don said, no. So that's, there are ways to do it.
The one I think of is Chris Meyer and the rock cut, and what he had to go through in order to improve that little plaza. And I, I, I don't think you could convince me that that amount of work in months was probably...
It was only six weeks, but having said that,
Well, we're in it.
It's part of, part of the, part of the issue. No, 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 it was only six weeks.
We stopped him from working, and then...
I was gonna say, he started on his own. He started on his own.
Sixty days before.
Don's, yes, that's, so it took him a while for him to get his application forth, put forth.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that, as a board, it would be nice if we
But the bottom line...
Made it as easy as we can.
Yeah, but the bottom line is that because we did do a good site plan review, that is a thriving plaza.
Well, it was a good...
It has parking, it has...
He did exactly what he was gonna do all the while.
We don't know that, though, until he comes before us.
Now, actually, he didn't have any place put forth for signage. That was us that got him to put the signage there.
And the lighting.
And I know from, his tenants would like to have a directory sign, and he doesn't have one yet because of other issues, but we also worked with him. DOT, had we referred to DOT, would have in two seconds required curbing, as you know there, as well as paving. So, I mean, I think it's, again, it's always a balancing act.
It's hard.
But I think that in this case, we, we tried to give in as much as so that he could spend the money on improving the building. But I, I take your, I, the town board is here, represented here tonight, so you've heard this too. And I know the supervisor is taken to watching our meetings. So, because she learns stuff from it, she said. So these comments, I think, don't, don't fall in deaf ears to the town board. So, and I'll make, I'm not sure what we could do, but I'll at least mention it up. The last item is...
Well, one minute, let me throw one other comment into there. Reinbeck, I believe, also has, I'm not gonna use the term more liberal, but if it's a facade-only change, there is a fast tract that can be done up in Reinbeck. And that is something, you know, the town board, again, we, we don't have the ability to do that, but the town board does have the ability to go out,
Can you?
Seek it out a little bit.
Can you get a copy of that law?
White.
And email it to us, what that section of code is?
Ah!
Because I don't...
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, if I can or can't.
I don't know that there is such a, if you, if you know, but let, just tell them to give us the section of code and we can go online.
I'll see what I can find out for you.
Because Reinbeck, a friend of mine who owned, opened up a gelateria, meaning ice cream shop, but Italian style, was given notices of violation for first, putting a bench outside, a bench, and second, a flower, a pot of, a container of flowers. Now, there,
Wow.
There were, I will try to say mitigating circumstances because it was next door to a medical shop, and they were worried that someone might trip over them. But they're very stringent, and he wound up closing the business just because he was sick of the aggravation, so to speak.
There is a friend of mine owns a business there in Reinbeck, and I will see if I can get her to track me down.
That'd be great to let us know, because that way we could have a starting point.
I will pass that to you if I'm able to track it down.
Thank you.
I have no idea, you know. As they say, I was chatting with her and she made the comment, so.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is a release of escrow. Everyone has signed off for it, both the engineer and the attorney.